Right, thank you for that. So, on to the agenda, so just check what papers people have. So, there's a public pack available, which is a chunk of papers, and members of the committee only will have a slightly larger chunk of papers, and that will relate to the items that we're going to have to go into a closed session for, and I'll say a bit more about that in a moment, but just check that people have got that, otherwise it's just a single pack of papers there. So, I think, yeah, I think we just start with introductions, so I should have said, I'm Douglas Johnson, councillor for City Ward and chair of the Housing Policy Committee. I'll just go around people in turn and ask them to introduce themselves, I think with councillor Baker.
Thank you. Councillor Penny Baker, councillor for Stanley's Ward and councillor for the Department of the Labour Party.
Penny, I'm not entirely sure your microphone was working then, if you could just check if you're logged in.
Councillor Penny Baker, councillor for Stanley's Ward and vice-chair.
It's certainly working now, thank you.
Councillor Sophie Thornton, councillor for Beechif and Greenall Ward.
Thank you.
Councillor Mike Chaplin, representing Southie Ward.
Thank you.
And substituting for Paul Wood today.
Substituting for councillor Paul Wood, thank you, yeah, it's okay.
Councillor Alan Woodcock, councillor for East Ecclesfield Ward, substituting for councillor Auckland.
Thank you, that's councillor Sue Auckland, isn't it, just to avoid any doubt, thank you. Of this side.
Fran Belbin, councillor for First Park Ward.
Thank you.
Councillor Denise Fox, councillor for Bailey Ward.
Councillor Malacay Heavy for Bromhill and Sherrleville.
Thank you. And now if we just go around the officers, so I'll start over here.
Rachel Marshall, Principal Democratic Services Officer.
Thank you, Rachel.
David Hollis, Assistant Director Legal and Governance.
Right.
Ryan Keyworth, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Good afternoon, Adwan Ali, Executive Director of Operational Services.
Thank you, and shall we go over to the run-time Janet?
I'm Janet Shaw. I'm the Director of Housing for the Housing and Neighbourhood Services within Operational Services portfolio.
Thank you.
Afternoon, everyone, I'm Tom Smith, I'm the Director of Direct Services, our responsibility for the housing repairs and maintenance service.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Mulagley, head of Neighbourhood Services.
All right, thank you. I'll probably suggest ask any other officers who are going to speak to introduce themselves when it comes to the right item, and so we've got one member of the public, welcome Jenny, we'll come on to your bit shortly. Rachel, just confirm apologies, would you, with item two.
Thank you, Chair, we've had apologies from councillor Paul Wood and from councillor Sue Auckland.
Right, thank you, okay.
Douglas?
Yes.
Can we also note the apologies from councillor Ben Curran, please, who's had a family emergency, so it's coming very late.
Beg your pardon, yes.
And we're hoping that councillor Saffi Said will substitute.
Yes, got that, that's everyone, isn't it? Yeah, right, thank you, we've accounted for everyone, okay. So that's apologies, that was item two, so if we move on to item three, which is exclusion of the press and the public, that will include the webcast, we do need to address that this time, and that is because we've got, the councillors here have got two reports for items fourteen and fifteen on the agenda, and we are, these not surprisingly deal with budget issues, you can see, one is the housing revenue account, pressures and savings, and fourteen is the general funds, pressures and savings. This stage in the year that we're at means that as councillors and officers, we need to discuss those privately, because naturally there are some sensitive things, and I think it's fair to say that we all know that we're dealing with a pretty horrible budget situation, we are going to have to make some difficult decisions in due course, but they need to be handled with appropriate sensitivity, and I think it's only right to, everyone in the city who's going to be affected by that. However, I think it's also fair to say, there's a bit of a desire to make sure there's no firm and final decisions made today, but we'll address that when we come to it, I think. I think it's a suggestion that we slightly reorder the agendas, as you see, items eight and nine are the same parts that are linked with fourteen and fifteen, so it's just the public parts of those, so I think it's a suggestion that we shift those to the end of the agenda, sorry, shift eight and nine to the end of the agenda, and then we can have the public briefing on that, we can then break and go into private session and deal with those together with fourteen and fifteen for the discussion, it would be artificial to do otherwise. So, if everyone's okay with that, that's what I propose we do, and now get on with the rest of the agenda. Is everyone on the committee happy with that ordering? Okay, thanks. So, item four is declarations of interest, so quick question, does any member here have a declaration of interest that they want to put forward? Don't see anyone, I'm sure that's right, thank you very much. So, item five is the sets of minutes of previous meetings, and you'll find those in the agenda pack, to the public, on page eleven onwards. I think we just need someone to propose we approve those or otherwise, Fran.
Can I just note that it says I attended that meeting and I didn't, so.
Right.
Point of accuracy there.
That is a point of accuracy, can we ask that to be minuted and, well, to be corrected where possible, thank you. Can I ask if there's any other corrections to those? No, okay, are we content to approve those? Anyone disagreeing? Right, let's treat those minutes as approved. Okay, Rachel? Yeah, okay. So on to item six, this is where we can actually start on the public stuff, so that's good, now, let me just see.
Would we raise some matters arising from the minutes?
I beg your pardon?
Yes.
Yes, let's do that, just say what it is, what's, which page are we on first of all?
Page twelve.
Page twelve, thank you.
Did Emily receive a question, did she receive that in, Emily Proctor?
Um.
Received that, did she ask for that in writing?
I hope so, but actually I don't know, Rachel, do you know if Emily Proctor got that written reply?
Not at this point in time, Chair, but I can chase that up for you.
And also Geoff Cox, the people that came?
Similarly, yes, yes.
Did we get that answer for him?
Could be the same answer, we don't know, we definitely need to check, they should have had it, but actually I don't know, so. Rachel, can we note those, and we'll, we just need to get on top of those.
Yes, Chair.
Thanks. For some reason, I think we're still learning a bit about how committees work. Right, thank you. Any other matters arising? Fran, yes?
Seven point one talks about having an informal meeting about the work programme, and I wanted to ask if that had happened.
Yes, because we've, through the briefings, I think we've had, I think, yeah, I think that is right, yeah, okay. Any other matters arising? No, shall we treat those as approved and move on to the public questions? So I just want to check first of all, we had, we originally had two petitions, we've got one that's outstanding and, right, is it Mark? Mark, okay. Jenny, you might be jumping in the gun a bit, because we do petitions first, so, Mark, I think if I invite you to come to the desk, but Jenny's taken over, I'll bump you back there, you've got a petition there, now, I just want, I've seen the text of the petition, thank you, I don't know if we've had any advice on this, but I think the, there's a slight sensitivity, because it names a particular property, I think we get the point there, are you okay if you don't name the particular property, and.
This was a different one.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, yeah, we're just having, it's okay, it's fine, if you want to just say what you'd like to say about the petition, and then I've got a note about where we are with that, so yeah, over to you, Mark, and if you're happy, if you press the red button or press the button on there, that's it, you're on mic now.
So I'm a bit nervous, yeah, it's just a petition, they built a flat underneath my dwelling a couple of years ago, but they didn't tell anybody in the block that it was going to be a halfway house, and they've had tenants in there. Can I say drug users, like, drug users in there, and which have caused a lot of hassle for myself and my neighbours, within my, asking them for money and knocking on the door at mad, tiny mornings and that, so we've just done petitions for it to not to become a permanent residence and not a halfway property, because at the beginning when they asked everyone if they didn't tell us it was going to be one of us, we would have all had objections and concerns about it, and, yeah.
Thank you very much, Mark, it's helpful for us to, you know, hear that explanation from you, if you like, just press the button to turn your mic off again, okay, yeah, thanks very much, it does help us actually to hear about these cases sometimes, I've got a note from the Housing Service about that, and you may have picked this up already, but we had, the tenants who were there have moved out, they've moved back to other accommodation, and this was about a month ago, the property was vacant, and actually it is still vacant now, it's going to be returned to general needs housing, so hopefully it'll be let soon, but will be to a permanent resident rather than what it was used for before, so hopefully that will address one of the issues there, and hope you get a good neighbour come in and it helps build up the community. Thank you very much for bringing that, if you want to sit back on the other seat, I think we'll be going to Jenny next, thank you, Mark. Okay, Jenny, so, welcome, if you want to just give the committee your name, and then you've got a question, so we're doing public questions now.
I'm Jenny Carpenter, and I'm bringing this question on behalf of the South Yorkshire Climate Alliance. The question is relevant to both the climate emergency and to the current energy and cost of living crisis, as I think you will appreciate, I did take the opportunity to send a copy to all the members of the committee, some of you were substitutes, so you may not have seen it, but because it's something which I'm sure is important, private rented accommodation has some of the poorest energy efficiency performance standards, and consequently the highest energy bills. Liverpool City Council, which many of you know is actually in something of a crisis at the moment, but this is a good thing it's done, it has addressed this head-on by using a selective licensing designation, which requires landlords to comply with minimum energy standards. The Liverpool exercise was done through a bid, through Bayes, to get special funding to address issues for the worst housing, to get F and G up to at least E, which is all that they're trying to do on this, on this case, now I'm aware that this council would like everywhere to be in C, and that, you know, in terms of your own properties, that is, that is the aim, but it seems to me that we shouldn't ignore the very worst of our housing, and of course that tends to be lived in by the people who have got the least money, they do tend to have electricity meters, which is the most expensive way of paying for your fuel bills, and so it does seem to me that this example of Liverpool won't be one that's worth investigating, and to do something similar to address the issue on the poorest aspects of our rented housing, and I would urge you to do something about it, so the final question is, when will Sheffield follow suit and do something similar to this? Thank you.
Thank you very much for the question there, and thanks for popping the mic off, it's a very important question you raise, it is something we're looking at, I've got some advice from our own expert staff in this field, so the key points I think are, first of all, in terms of selective licensing, that is on our work plan for discussion, I think at the next meeting, but if not, the January one, and the advice that actually it's not technically correct that Liverpool's enforcing this type, this aspect of energy efficiency through the selective licensing scheme, I understand it's the technical reason it is, basically two different pieces of legislation, you enforce each one through its own route, clearly they have done something interesting there, and I'm sure that we'll take that into account when we can, so the selective licensing is something that applies to private landlords in a certain area or across the whole city, but the minimum energy efficiency standards is a separate piece of legislation, a separate enforcement tool which can be applied, and the advice I have from us is, we don't proactively carry out that in the private sector present, simply because we don't have the resources to do that proactive work, it is something that's needed there, there is, they've been working with the Government Department on new legislation to push for the increase in the minimum standard to EPC level C, so that's a target to go for, and there are also some exemptions for landlords, which we've been pressing the government to take some action on, so, I hope that's helpful, and you'll know now that that is on the agenda, so, thank you, thank you very much. Right, I think that's all the petitions, do we just note, there is, let me just say, there was another petition received that's been ruled, was one that we can't discuss in the meeting, because it refers to particular allegations about a particular named individual, and it wouldn't be right to discuss that in a public area, but I think we can give the commitment that the petitioner will get a written response, certainly, if she hasn't already. I think that deals with all petitions?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
In that case, we'll go on to the work programme, so item seven, although it says work programme, there's actually a few items in here, but I'll hand over to Rachel Marshall to advise us.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to draw members' attention, please, to agenda item seven of the work programme, so this is to point out that this belongs to the committee, and there are a set of recommendations which we would like you to agree that the committee's programme, work programme moving forward, and to give consideration to any necessary additions and amendments, and that members give consideration to any further issues that are to be explored by this committee, there is, in section two, we have references from other council or other committees, and we would like you to note those as well, please, and on that note, I think that's all I have to say on that, with the work programme moving forwards, Chair, if you would like to speak on the references, if, yeah, thank you.
Shall we deal with these now, so it's, this is a new area for us in a way, if I could just get everyone to look at page eighteen first of all, so first of all, we had the reference from full council as part of a motion, which is really about support through housing and homelessness for LGBTQ plus Sheffielders, there is some commentary there which you'll find helpful, but a note, we have actually got both the homelessness service and support for vulnerable employed people on our work plan already, that's scheduled for the next meeting in November, so probably propose that we actually make sure that we incorporate this referral in that item, if everyone's happy with that, and then, secondly, on page nineteen, page twenty, there's a referral from the North East Lac, which is really about selective licensing and the regulation of private landlords, but as I noted before, we've got selective licensing on the work plan at the next meeting, which I'm expecting to be January, but I don't know, January, we won't, so I guess that's the way to dispose of that, if everyone approves, and finally we have the petition on the, on the outhouses at Busk Meadows, and I'm not entirely sure what we're doing with that, have we given a reply to the person?
Yes.
So it's on the, right, okay, yes, yes, that's right, thank you, so we've got, yes, a petition we had received to twelve outhouses at Busk Meadows, ten accounts loans, two are leasehold, there's a petition in January twenty twenty-two, which is about Atlantic Road, at the other end of the city, then we've got, yeah, another petition by the Busk Meadow residents, there's two of that, has a leasehold, both leaseholders will be required to give approval to the council to progress the demolition, which is what the petitioners are asking for, we understand that one leaseholder's in favour and one's opposed, legal and property services have been commissioned to process the acquisition of the leasehold units, and then, yeah, then it's proposed that a full report is presented to Future Housing Policy Committee meeting to explore all options, including all costs and legal obligation, implications to secure an agreed way forward, okay, is that just for these twelve outhouses? Okay, all right, well, that's where we are then, so if the committee's prepared to accept that, then perhaps we can ask officers to progress it in that way. So, with those three things there, has anyone got any questions on that, or comments, or shall we progress those that way, is there a general assent in the room to dispose those items? Right, thank you, well, those are the odd items there, but back to the work plan itself, I'll just hand back to Rachel again, I think.
Thank you, Chair, this is an opportunity to shape this work programme moving forwards, you can see that we have recommendations set out and a plan for further meetings, in appendix one, there are further items to be considered for future meetings, some of which are yet to be agreed, so with the recommendations moving forwards, can we, can I pass back to you, Chair, to get those agreed?
Yes, thank you, yes, as you'll see, all the changes to the work programme that proposed are really just deferring things that we've not been able to deal with yet, is a general agreement to that amongst committee members, and any other questions or comments on the work plan? Fran?
I just wondered just what was the process around the to be arranged, and when, how they will end up being scheduled, because some of those things seem quite important to me, in particular around net zero, I did want to ask as well, and perhaps this comes on to a later point, so apologies if so, I think we've got the Gleedless Valley delivery plan on for November, and certainly since joining this committee, I've had a lot of questions from the public on that, so I'd really like to know what briefings will be arranged around that, and also what public engagement is taking place, because the impression I'm getting from members of the public is that they don't know where to ask these questions.
Yes, that's Janet.
So in terms of the Gleedless Valley delivery plan, so one of the things we did round about March to May time is we had the draft master plan, so there's been some final tweaks of that, you know, tidying up the boundaries and things like that, that we agreed that we would do, and that's been finalised, also what has been put in place is the delivery team to work with the community, and we've also reinstated the formal governance structures for Gleedless Valley, so one of the things that we will now be doing is commencing those governments, we've agreed those with the Community Engagement Group for Gleedless Valley, that was set up as part of the master plan work, and also we will be starting those local briefings, and certainly local councillors have been notified of those, so we've got a final master plan with, you know, all the final tweaks, and that has been signed off, we are now then in the process of then consulting on the development of the delivery plan for that master plan, what will happen, where, when, how, and I think now that we are making plans to put the delivery team in place, that will then be clear, one of the things I can also confirm is that the delivery team will be based in Gleedless Valley, so they will be accessible not only to local councils but also to the local community, because we feel that that is needed, given the scale of changes with Gleedless Valley, so one of the things I can do with officers is set out a really clear briefing of what's going to happen when with regard to those changes, thank you.
Thank you very much, that's really helpful, Janet, Fran, councillor Belbin, and just to answer the broader point you make about how we get things on the agenda, we do, so first of all, we can ask for briefings as, which are available to the whole committee, and, and we can do that, so I think there's clearly a request there for the Gleedless Valley master plan, so we can bring that forward, and in terms of getting things on the agenda and discussing what goes on, so we do have informal pre-agenda meetings, which is normally at least reps from each party group here, so it's normally councillor Curran, or in his absence councillor Wood, and I think sometimes you've been there too, so we need to make use of those. Okay, so that's the work plan, any other questions on that, or can we formally agree that work plan? General nods, no dissent on that? Okay, let's treat that as agreed, is that, that item done, Rachel? Right, okay, now let's go on to the substantive stuff here, so moving on to the main bit of the agenda, so if we propose that we leave items eight and nine until the last bit of this, we'll move straight on to item ten, so this is the community heating, district heating pricing review, just wanted to ask, who's presenting, is that you, Janet?
I'm happy to introduce Aunfiona Orr, who's coming to the table, who is the lead officer in housing, who's been at the forefront of negotiating and trying to, presenting the report here today.
Right, well, welcome Fiona, thank you very much, I'm just going to check that there's no, nothing that, Ryan, you need to add at this point, is there?
Not yet.
Thank you, so Fiona, if you're able to introduce yourself, say what your role is, and then let's take us through the paper, which members of the committee will find at page sixty-three.
Hi, I'm Fiona Orr, I'm the Service Manager for the Home Ownership and Revenues Unit, and I've got the responsibility for the community's heating budget.
Thank you, so do you want to just take us through what's being proposed here, fairly briefly, I think we'll get the idea, and just why we need to make this decision, and what being asked to weigh up?
Yeah, so very briefly, we're bringing forward the proposal today to have a mid-year price increase, which is something we've not done before in direct relation to the fact that the gas prices have increased considerably and are still increasing, which was something that was unknown, or certainly not at the point that they are now, at the time that we were forecast, and we normally do price increases at the end of the year, so we're proposing bringing that forward to mitigate a budget gap.
Thank you, that's a nice concise thing, Janet, do you want to add something?
Yeah, yes, certainly, I think Fiona is like, set out that this is probably the first time in many years where we have had to introduce and propose a mid-year term reviews, and that reflects the volatility obviously of the energy marking at that price, one of the things that we have done, that you will see from the report, is making sure, you know, that community heating remains affordable for people in these very difficult circumstances, and also one of the things that, if the report is approved, the recommendations are approved, is there will be quite a lot of detailed work that will take place with those residents, we're going to see an increase in costs, and that will also include highlighting any, for any families that need additional support, and also access to any additional hardship or support, that we would talk to tenants about, you know. to any additional hardship support that we would, um, talk to tenants about, you know, if they are facing hardship. Um, but one of the things that we feel is, uh, the right thing to do is to have a mid-year increase. Um, if not, that will put additional risks onto the HRA business plan and pressures. Um, and also, um, it feels appropriate because we also know that many tenants who have individual gas boilers and other, and are seeing other energy increases. So, and also, one of the things that we don't want to do, um, is then end up with a more significant increase next financial year to cover the shortfall in the community heating account this year. So it will get residents used to working with us, seeing an increase, but also, we can provide much more detailed support for where the, the price increases are likely to be in 23, 24. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, yes. Very good to know about the support that's available for people. Um, perhaps the thing you haven't said, it's clear in the report though, is that whilst we wouldn't want to put some prices up for anyone, if we can avoid it, if it's not put up for the people using the heating, it's probably paid for by other tenants, and I guess that's a dilemma we have. Uh, have we got anyone who's wanting to speak on that, apart from Fran? Right, over to councillor Baker.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, we actually had a, um, conversation about this elsewhere, because obviously it's very concerning, uh, that people have to have any price or increases at all. But, um, there's a couple of things, one, we don't have to consult on it, which is always concerning, but I think when you actually look at it, you can see why, but it, it's still a concern. Um, the other thing is, um, because we asked the questions, um, any government subsidy that would be given on any heating would actually be included in this. So just because they're on, um, district heating, they wouldn't lose out on anything that would come from the government, so there is some help there, like there is to people who have their own gas boilers, which helps. The other thing is, I think, one of the things we might like to have a conversation about is, when the other costs hopefully come down, then these costs should come down as well. Because it, it, you know, as, as you're saying, the, you know, if we didn't do this, then other tenants would be paying for it, and, and that wouldn't be correct. But though we don't want to do it, we, we seem to be in a situation where we have to. So any help and support the tenants can get to pay this, we should make sure that we help and support them get it. Um, and as soon as things start going down again, which hopefully they will, then we must be prepared to take this down as well.
Okay, Janet, I wonder if we can just bring in councillor Goldin first, and then maybe we can just respond on anything there, is that okay? Fran?
Thank you. So I was at a meeting of the Sheffield Energy Network this morning, which brought together various organisations who were working on fuel poverty, and I did mention this, um, and some of the, and they made a number of points about this scheme, and they felt that actually, firstly, that, and if any of this is inaccurate, please do correct, Janet, firstly they felt that the scheme was mainly available to people who were quite vulnerable tenants and tended to be in, you know, they're, they're in blocks and so on, and so they do tend to be quite vulnerable. And they also felt that they are already paying more than, um, average people are paying. So on the stats that are in the, uh, the charges that are in the paper, um, it talks about a £4.90 per week standing charge, whereas the current gas standing charge is 28.49 pence per day, so that's already more than most people are paying on standing charge. And the, uh, current kilowatt charge is, uh, as of October is 10.5 pence, and what we're proposing is to raise it to, I think it's 12, isn't it? So it's already above that. So I've got to be honest, I don't really understand the whole points around how this is subsidising other tenants, it feels more like these tenants are already paying a little bit more, so I, I, I don't fully understand what the benefits are of the community heating scheme, if that's the case. Um, the other points that were made were that the tenants can't switch to other rates, for example, which I appreciate. At the moment, most people aren't looking to do that, and that they can't be on the priority service register, so I wondered if you could address those points, please.
Right, and I'll, I'll pick up, obviously, the, the subsidy issue, and then I'll be happy to hand over to Fiona, who's done, uh, huge amounts of work on, on this, with regarding to, to look at, um, the comparisons. So in, in terms of, um, the, the heating, it is a ring-fenced account within the housing revenue account, so whatever we pay out, we collect back by, you know, approximately around about 6,000 tenancies that, that have this form of heating. Um, and that also includes, obviously, you know, to make sure that it's in a good state of repair. Um, so, but what we've all, but with regard to, uh, the comparisons is, one of the things that we would not do is we would not be providing, uh, any sort of support for, for those on an individual boiler, who, who, you know, if they, they are receiving their energy from, from Eon or British Gas or anyone else, which is the majority of people who live in council properties. So this is very much a ring-fenced account. Um, whatever it costs us, we then work out what that will cost, both in terms of a standing charge and also in, in terms of that kilowatt hour. Um, and there are various variances that we have seen, you know, some with a less standing charge and a more kilowatt hour, and most with less kilowatt hour and a, and a different standing charge. But I will hand over to Fiona, who has done some of the detailed work on this.
Right, I think as you rightly state, it is quite complicated, so it's quite difficult to make direct comparisons. Um, people with a private boiler are buying raw gas, so they're going to be buying it at a lower kilowatt hour rate than those on a, a central, uh, community heating, because they're buying usable heat, so you're not comparing the same product. That said, at the current time, our price comparisons, actually even with the standing charges, aren't much different compared to, it's the increase that changes it. Now, prior to the government announcement last week, I think it was last week, about the price cap, uh, the proposed rates would have been substantially higher for private, but obviously they've introduced a price cap that brings that down. What hasn't been released yet is what's will be available for those on alternative methods, so whether they use oil or if they're on community heating. There has been a statement that says a discretionary fund will be made available, but the details of how we access that just aren't there yet. As soon as they are, we'll obviously make sure everybody who's on community heating has access to that information, uh, we just don't know yet. But as a direct comparison, it, it isn't significantly more, um, it's just about understanding how we access the right support.
Thank you. Um, do you have any other questions on that? I mean, I suppose the good news is that, of course, if, um, fuel prices dramatically plunge, then the same tenants will get the money back in the long run, in the sense it's a self-balancing account for those tenants. Um, another question?
I suppose, following that, I'm trying to understand, is there any real benefit to these tenants being on the community heating scheme, because they don't seem to have much choice about it?
Janice?
Um, I, I think one of the things, I think in terms of it being much more energy efficient to have been on a community heating scheme rather than individual boilers, uh, that, that's certainly, that's certainly a benefit, and that's one of the reasons, obviously, why we've, we've got these schemes. Uh, most of them are a group scheme rather than, obviously, through the viola with, you know, a central boiler house, um, and, and serving a number of, uh, properties and sometimes other things like schools. Um, so, so very much, it's much more efficient to do that. Um, I think one of the things that we are doing through all of our, our community heating schemes at the moment, because some of them, uh, need a lot of investment, because the, the distribution schemes are, are reaching the end of their life, is that we are doing some like detailed work on, on options. But certainly I feel that, that they are a much more efficient way of managing heating in large blocks of, of flats and maisonettes. Um, it's, that's good for the environment. Um, and also, you know, one of the things we can do, I mean, these are difficult circumstances, is where we are, you know, purchasing that heating, as Fiona has said, uh, or, you know, it, it actually offers some protections as well for tenants, in terms of, you know, it's a ring-fenced account, we can help stabilise payments during the year, this is exceptional to be setting a new, an increase mid-year. Normally, you know, at the start of the year, we can be clear what people are paying throughout the year, and that's not the case for people with, you know, present individual boilers at this moment in time. So, um, so we think that it is a good form of heating, but once we've done some of the options work on some of the schemes that are coming to the end of their life, and we've got to make some decisions about, um, how we heat those homes, then certainly, we will be looking at all options available.
Right, thank you. Um, just before I bring in councillor Chaplin, a just reminder that the, the recommendation we asked for is on page 64, and of course, is just about the, the immediate issue of, um, the price increase, um, rather than the wider issues of community heating. But if go over to councillor Chaplin.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Um, just trying to get my head around the, the difference really, or sorry, what, one of the, if I've understood this right, because we've sort of alluded to it in referring to private householders that have to obtain, purchase their own boiler, um, which you have to do every, every so many years. Um, I had a cheap one many years ago that only lasted six years, but other boilers do, um, do last longer. Um, and depending on your approach to risk, you will either take out a service plan, um, or hopefully find yourself a good gas engineer when the boiler doesn't work. Has that been factored in as a comparison against the, the district heating scheme?
Yes. Yes, and, and to make sure that, you know, obviously what we will do for the 7,000 council homes that have individual gas boilers, um, is that obviously the rent will pick up those repair costs, and we would apply the same principle with community, but the difference is, is where you are actually, you know, whatever else we are providing, services we are providing for managing that community heating, and that all becomes part of, obviously, the, the heating cost.
Right, thank you, um, that, that helps.
Well, then happy to go through this answering in more detail and send a, um, a, a note post, post-committee if that, if that would be helpful on the detail.
That, that might be helpful if you could, you know, around the room, um, yeah, were members like that, yeah? Are you want to come in with a question there? Okay, councillor Thornton, yeah.
Sorry about that. Um, I'm just having a look through, um, item five on here, point five, um, about the alternative options that have been considered throughout this. Um, obviously, it, it very briefly touches on the smaller amount that has been put in as a, a way to minimise this impact, um, but it was kind of, it, it seems to me, um, from, from this report anyway, that it was just rejected. Um, I was wondering if you could give some more detail on what the smaller amount was, and a bit more, more in-depth detail, because there isn't a lot here on why that decision was rejected, um, going forward, please.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, um, as I said, when the budget or the forecast was set for this year, it was largely when the price of what the gas costs would be was, was unknown, or that certainly the forecasts were just not where they needed to be. Um, and that was simply because of the, it was before the, the war started and all sorts of elements that caused the prices to go up. Um, we did look at, uh, the possibility of a smaller increase, it would still put significant pressure on the HRA and still mean that, in essence, that, uh, tenants with community heating were getting subsidised by tenants, not on community heating, by the way in which the funding was needed. Um, and as Janet's kind of talked about, the fact is prices are still going up, um, unless there is more government support coming, there is the strong possibility these prices are going to need to be increased again. Um, so it's, it's trying to mitigate some increase now without it being a dramatic increase in the following year. And as you've all kind of rightly talked about, if the prices go down and we're all hoping, uh, seriously hoping that they do, then obviously, as we're watching it closely, we will bring those down as quickly as we possibly can. It's a, it's just a really challenging time.
Thank you, that's, uh, in view of the time, I'd really like to go to the recommendation now, if people are content with that, um, are people, members of the committee happy to approve the recommendation on page 64, which is to, um, approve the standing rate change remains fixed at £4.90 a week, uh, for the duration of the financial year, the kilowatt hour charge is increased from 5.69 to 12 pence per kilowatt hour from, from October, so that's immediate but soon. That is the recommendation there. Um, do I have general approval of that? Fran, yes? So, sorry, beg your pardon, yeah, shall I call a vote on this? So, um, I'll just ask a show of hands, um, you know, in those in favour. Sorry, Penny, just put the mic on.
Right, so, um, it's the recommendation we need to vote on today. Clarification, thank you.
Yes, sorry, the, the recommendation as set out on page 64, so officers are recommending that the committee approves the change there.
This isn't a budget proposal, this is a current in-year.
Yes, yeah, yes, David's route minds of this is a current in-year proposal, it's not for next year, this is one we're dealing with now. So the, the proposal is as set out.
Obviously, as members, we're very concerned about this, and I'm not really happy, but, um, can you, can we have clarity about what would happen if we didn't support this?
Yes, that's a good question. Think over to, um, Janet, is it?
Yeah, yes, certainly, and I think elsewhere on this agenda, um, there is a finance report for, um, the, uh, for the, both the housing revenue account, and, and that is showing a significant overspend this financial year. So what that would do, um, is that, that, that will be a further increase. Um, and also, elsewhere on the report is talking about some of the pressures on the housing revenue account in 23, 24, and we would need to then fa- factor in, if there any, is there any additional, um, cost for community heating that cannot be recovered? And, and again, you will see within that, within that report, that, that this is, is also assuming that the community heating charges are managed within that trading account, and that trading account balances for both 22, 23 and 23, 24.
Does that answer your question, councillor Baker?
There's a, there's a, as a, as a million pound shortfall assumption being assumed at this stage.
That, that's right. I, I think it's fair to say, isn't it, that if we approve the recommendation, then the tenants who are using the heating will have to pay the increase in charges that everyone else is facing, and if not, then other council tenants will have to pay it for them. I think that's the implication of rejecting the recommendation. So it's obviously open to the committee to vote either way, um, but this is, you know, the very first step of the difficult budget decisions that we're going to have to make over forthcoming months.
So the clarity is that, um, if we don't support this, then tenants in other ways, who probably aren't on community heating, will have to pay more. I don't see, we, at least, that leaves us all in a rather difficult situation, doesn't it?
Does that, is everyone clear about, um, the choice that we have to make today? Does anyone need any further clarification? Or we ready to vote?
Chair, I'd be far happier reaching a, a decision on this if I, if I knew what the government had in store for people on district heating schemes and similar, in terms of what, what financial support would be coming down the track. Uh, instead, we know what, what support there is for, uh, for people who have their own private boilers or their own, um, yeah. We know, we know what's there for them, but we don't know what's there for people on district heating schemes.
Right, okay, that's a good point. Um, so government's offering some payments to help people, is the question, will these also apply to people on district heating? Uh, because we have raised that question. I think the answer is yes, it will. Can someone confirm?
So the, the, excuse me, the latest government information says that there is going to be a discretionary fund made available. How, how will they apply for that funding and how that funding will be given? It, it just isn't there yet. Uh, that, that information was announced last Thursday, and obviously other events have taken over since. There is hope that it will be released in the next couple of weeks, but, and we just don't know what that's going to look like. But the commitment is that it will match the offer that is there for everybody on the main network.
Right, thank you. Got more questions on this issue, so.
Sorry.
Councillor Baker first.
Sorry, Chair. So we're asked to make a big Sorry Chair. So we're asked to make a big decision now on something that we're not going to have the information on till later. That's how it seems to be reading. And I think that's why members are a bit concerned. We accept, you know, people have to have what they pay for, but we are not in a decisive situation yet. Or that's how it feels. So perhaps it should come back to committee in November.
Okay, bring Janet in. I mean, would it be sensible to take councillor Thornton's question first?
Yeah, apologies. I was nattering a little bit whilst you were talking about discretionary fund. But also if that's, you know, coming in with the same level of support, would putting, has there been, well, can you explain, I'm sure there has, considerations given to, obviously when we're putting prices up, you will end up with more people wanting to access that, sort of access support and access funding support. Surely that will then be another increased budgetary pressure. There's more people wanting to support you, wanting support from us as a city council. So I see it as a bit cyclical in a way, if that makes sense. Because if you're going to put prices up, more people are going to be put under very difficult circumstances and need to access support, need to access support from us, has consideration been given to that. And I don't know whether you have a report on it, as to whether it would outweigh, your predictions on that would outweigh the increase that this would give. Or does that make sense?
It does. I think it's quite a difficult question to answer. What we do know is that the prices are going up considerably. So there is, it's kind of, there's no, there's no end in sight at the moment. We kind of wish there were, but all the latest reports show it going up, not just a little bit for next year, but substantially again. So I suppose delaying it just perhaps means that we're going to be facing a bigger cliff inch further on. We just don't know what that's going to look like. And we've been in that situation now for the last year really, whilst these continue to increase. So I agree, the more prices go up, the more people are in difficult situations. And we absolutely don't want that to happen. But we're also in a position where we've got to make everything match at some point as well. So it is just really tricky. I'm conscious of significant prices increases in the next year. I think that's where we're at until there's more information from the government. And I appreciate it's difficult that we don't have that. But we do know the prices are still going up. We've got no period of stability yet that we've, that we've been told of, or we've got any advice on.
Thank you. Janet, do you want to come in to add anything else?
No, I think Fiona's covered that. I think my concern is, you know, with a delay, one of the things that we will is, should we find more detail about the government's additional support, then we would make, quickly be able to make those adjustments. But we do really need to be speaking with tenants that, living in these homes, that their prices are likely to increase. And also, we start working with tenants. At that stage, we will be, we will be talking to them about, you know, if there's additional government-like support. But we need to also be, you know, speaking with tenants about getting used to, you will be paying more for your heating, as everyone in the city presently is. The sooner we do that, the better. The sooner we can speak to people about, you know, other council help and support, we're looking at coordinating all hardship funds and, you know, make it easier for people who are in extreme hardship to contact the council. But my worry is that if we delay in November, then it's probably likely to go, going to be December before we're speaking to people. And then the price increase, to be able to balance the 2223 account, could be significantly more just before Christmas. It would be better to be speaking with people now and helping people now before we start to really get into those colder winter months where we then could be coming back to you and putting the price up further. Because we just don't know at this moment. But there is an assurance from myself and officers that if additional support comes in, then one, then one of the things we would be able to do is make a very quick adjustment on people's accounts to make sure that they are paying, you know, not as little as possible, but enough that we need to recover to balance this account.
Right. So I think saying that not only do we have a dilemma of putting the recommendation through or asking other tenants to pay, but also that delay will cost further cost to other tenants and services. Okay. Back to councillor Thornton.
I just wanted to come in on that. And obviously, I know that we can't change the past and that is, you know, we are here today. But the, and something, you know, it not requires to consult on this proposal. And you say that you want to get out and start talking to tenants on this. Now, I feel like that is something that, you know, instead of us coming here today and saying that this is what we think, because we've looked at the budget and this is what we need, actually going out and talking to those residents and being like, this is what we need to do, we want to do this. What, what in the realm, you know, prices are increasing across the board, trying to ascertain actually a level of affordability and what can be, including residents at every single stage. And I don't feel, but what, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that this section three was just, you know, with one sentence answer, it doesn't feel like consideration has really been given to that. And I want, you know, with all the things, all tough decisions, we want to bring residents with us and to make sure that everyone is able to and understanding of what's going on. Rather than saying, this is a decision that's been taken, here's the information about it. Because that's not consultation, that's just disseminating information to people. So that's one reason why I'm a bit uncomfortable with this as well. So please do enlighten me if there's been anything else, you know, going in the previous stages of, you know, bringing this report together, as to consulting with tenants and talking to them ahead of this report. Or is that just something that you wanted to do after today from this report or being approved?
Yes, if I can clarify is, one of the things is that the cost of heating homes and the cost of that energy has increased. And as a council, you know, we should be recovering for the cost. So that is about obviously cost recovery. One of the things we're talking about is that we need to be working for people who will need to budget for an increase in cost. And that is where we need to speak with people as quickly as possible. So alongside, obviously, our duty to obviously change the costs that people are paying, we also, you know, feel there is a service like we do with people who are struggling with the rent, or if they're struggling with service charges or other, you know, bills that we pass on to our customers. We also identify where there could be short-term help and support available should they need it. But most tenants want us to, you know, to help and support them in terms of, right, this is the cost, right, this is how I'm going to budget. And also to make sure that any other support for their, for their, managing their finances, you know, that we are signposting that and making that available to people.
Thank you very much. Are we ready to make a decision on this? Okay. I'm just slightly conscious of time. There is a bit to get through. And I do appreciate that this is uncomfortable decision-making for people. But actually, as nine members of this committee, I suppose I'm saying that we do need to face up to these decisions because we've got a budget issue right across the council. Let's just give a moment for the huddle to take place. report. So I'm assuming that will be more of, well, Janet and Tom together, won't it? Are we in a position to?
Sorry to take the time Chair, but I don't think there's just people that sat at the side of the room that are concerned about this. But the thing, one of the things that's getting us is the, is the recommendation is simply three lines which say, these costs are going up. We know that the government are planning some intervention. And we wondered if we could have something in there that would say that any intervention with the government may change this. Because there's nothing in this that says that at all. So that, you know, people can quite easily say, right, it's gone up, but they've got it and we haven't. And if we can get it in here, that, you know, anything that comes in for the government will be taken into consideration going forward.
Can I just check with the director whether that's implicit already because it's a self-balancing account? Is that something you could just address as a question?
Yeah, yes, certainly. I mean, if, if we would wish to agree by the form of words, that is implicit. And what we do as a service is work to support our tenants and leaseholders. And that is something that we would always aim to do. And so one of the things that we would do is make sure, you know, as part of the delivery of this message, that if we identify any vulnerable households who may also be struggling to pay their rent or other bills, that we would make sure that support is implicitly, you know, that they absolutely would know where to get help and support for that. Often people, when facing hardship, it's not just one bill, it's a number of different bills that people are struggling to pay, rather than see this in isolation.
I'll just bring in David Hollis.
Yeah, I mean, the recommendation is the officer recommendation. And unless Janet wants to change that, that is the recommendation. Now, as members, you can propose an alternative if you propose second and vote on that. But you need to be clear that that's a decision that can be made on the information you've got and knowing the full implications. So we would need to consider that as to whether that could go forward today or would need to be put off for something alternative to go in. What I would say is that the comments that have been made will be minuted. So that if you propose it, it will be minuted, that this is in the, in the knowledge that there is potential, that the government have said that some further assistance will be on its way.
Thank you. I was going to ask if that, if the director's comments brought some reassurance. But councillor Thornton?
It was just a quick procedural question, just on what you said David, in that you saying that we would have to propose an entirely separate proposal, or can we propose to amend?
You can't amend an officer recommendation, but you can propose, you can propose another, another course of action, which is an amendment of that, if that makes sense.
Can we not put an addition to the?
Or you could put an addition.
Yeah.
Because, you know, that's, that's what we're possibly suggesting.
Okay. Do you have a form of words of what you'd want to? Penny, can you just put the mic on?
Something relatively simple that says quite clearly that going forward, any government help and support will be impacted against this recommendation.
Okay, so just procedurally.
That makes sense.
I think it does. So just procedurally, are you proposing to add a second bullet point that says, that so the Housing Policy Committee would recommend that if further government funding becomes available, it's?
Bills would be adjusted?
Bills would.
Adjusted.
Yeah. Did you, shall we get a word and then go on to the next item?
Can I suggest that you move on to the next item? I'll speak to Janet and we'll try and come up with some wording that might work. And then we can come back to this.
Would you like a really quickly, because I think whilst we've got the mood of the room here just to focus on this, I think it'll be really helpful. I'm just quite keen that we actually bottom things down and make decisions, almost as a dry run for all the other stuff we've got to deal with.
Yes. I mean, I'll have a go now. It's whether you want to wait five minutes or whether you want to try and do the next item while I'm looking at that.
Would you like a five-minute break?
Do that.
Five-minute break, apart from David and Janet. Thank you. Are we live webcasting then? Okay. Right. So just to bring people back together. So first of all, thanks for bearing with that. I really wanted just to push the committee on this a bit because this is about decision-making and grappling with massive budget issues. This is the first one of a series of difficult and uncomfortable decisions that we're facing. And there is a bit of setting the frame there. I think we've got indication that we're ready to just have a vote on this. And it'll be a vote on the recommendation as set out in the papers at page 64. And that is, as I've read out before, simply approving the increase in the charges. So if everyone's ready, I'll just call a vote on a show of hands then. So ask first of all, everyone in favour of the recommendation as set out on page 64, including me? Okay, that's one vote for. Votes against the recommendation? Okay, none. And abstentions? That's everyone else. Right. So we've got one in favour and seven abstentions. Okay? So slightly random, but I guess that passes. Okay, we have a decision. So first of all, thank you very much for that. Okay, we'll go on to the next item, which is the performance report on item 11. So I think that is over. Janet, can you get?
Yes, certainly. I'd just like to very briefly introduce the report. And then myself and Tom are happy to pick up any particular questions. So this is the quarter one housing performance report that also includes the performance of the repair and maintenance service within this report. You will see, hopefully, the report is fairly self-explanatory and also provides quite a lot of information around different aspects of both the housing service and the repair service in terms of its performance in quarter one. And it also provides some narrative about how things are improving, particularly for the repair service that's detailed in the report. The report also has identified a number of areas where performance isn't as it should be, you know, particularly, you know, in terms of how we are delivering services, how we're tackling some difficult issues, particularly voids, vacant management, particularly, you know, the levels of disrepair, but also day-to-day housing management services. And also in terms of, you know, some of the impact that is having on tenants. And also further work that is required to improve our tenants' perception of how well our services are doing. And also alongside that, you know, how we engage with our tenants. And also listen to our tenants' concerns and act on those concerns. So there is lots of work for Tom and myself to do moving forward. I hope the report is fairly self-explanatory. And really, you know, we are happy to pick up any detailed questions within the performance reporting itself and the appendices.
Thank you very much. Tom, do you want to add anything to that or?
Just very briefly to say that in terms of the repairs and maintenance particularly, there are some green shoots of recovery within this report, as you can see, set out. This report also covers to the end of quarter one. And actually, since the end of quarter one, some of that improvement has continued. I think it's fair to say, we would all, you know, acknowledge as the director responsible for this service, that there is still some way to go for this service to be where we want it to be. But it's starting to reflect some of those green shoots. We are starting to see some reductions in backlog of responsive repairs, some improvements in the time we were taking to turn around void properties, and especially some improvements around things like our gas safety aspects. So it was just kind of to. So it was just kind of to, building what Janet said in terms of we're seeing some of that improvement, but we acknowledge there is still some way to go and we're working really hard on that.
Thank you very much. In view of the time, we spent quite a bit of time on the earlier things, so perhaps don't take any longer than is needed on this. But do we have any questions about this? We've got a fairly detailed report in front of us. Has anyone got anything need to ask the officers of this? Yes, councillor Thornton.
Denise, would you like to go first?
Happy either way, go on, councillor Thornton, yeah. Okay, either one of you, yeah, sure.
Thank you. One of the things that you highlighted was the not accessing households, not being able to get there. The reports that we get back is that men don't turn up, operatives don't turn up or are sitting in the vans outside. Now, I have had tenants ring me up immediately after the van's been sat there, expecting them to come in and then the vans drove away and I've had tenants ringing me up, said they've just run, they've run away. Or they've sneaked a card through the door and just drove off and the tenants sat waiting. Have we been able to address these, those issues? That's one. And the other one I noted where you've, I don't know if it's this report or the next, where you've mentioned about charging for missed appointments. Did you just elaborate on that? And if you've, you know, what would you be charging and have you looked into this and is other authorities doing this?
Yes, I, I'd like to.
Pick up the second question, Denise, if that's okay. One of the things that we are wanting to do, absolutely. You know, Tom has obviously got, we've got a real commitment to actually make sure that the repair service improves as we want it to do. Once we reach that stage, we do have, we do have incidents where, you know, tenants won't let us in whatever, you know, we do. You know, we spend a huge amount of time trying to gain access, you know, where appointments have been agreed and officers, you know, will, you know, will turn up and then obviously nobody's at home. So we've obviously got to get the service right. But once we're in that place, you know, we have got to change behaviour somehow. You know, because every time we attend a property, whether it's that's for a housing visit, whether that's for a repairs visit, you know, that not only costs us money, but also it avoids us dealing with somebody else's, you know, need for us to attend to their, to issues in their properties. So at that stage, one of the things that we're wanting to do is explore what a charging model might look like. So that's in a further report elsewhere, obviously on the agenda. I'm happy to hand over to Tom about, about the operatives.
So, I mean, I, I probably worth acknowledging upfront, you know, the reality is there is a deal here, isn't there, between the service and the tenant, between the service and the customer? If we're going to charge for missed appointments, we need to be, you know, we need to be as certain as we possibly can be that we've made every effort to get to that appointment. And I totally acknowledge, I get the same feedback you've had councillor Fox in terms of, you know, individual jobs where, you know, it's been alleged that our operatives have kind of, you know, like you say, snuck things through doors and things like that. What, so firstly, I would say on the positive side of this, our current statistics is something like 91% of appointments are kept. So we get to 91% of the appointments that we have scheduled in as per the date and time we said we would be. That still leaves a significant number that we're not getting to. So, you know, again, I would acknowledge that and say we want to improve that. We have now got really good IT systems in place. So we can track where all of our vehicles are. We have systems that show entirely what jobs our staff have been allocated, where they should be and when they should be. And when we get the kind of feedback that you've described, councillor Fox, we investigate that. If, you know, we have systems in place whereby if an operative knocks on the door and they don't manage to get access, we ask them to take a photograph of that, of the door and that feeds back into the system and we can see that back on our back office system. So we have lots and lots of things in place now which will enable us to manage these issues. At the end of the day, this comes down to management within the service. Just acknowledge that really clearly. So no matter how many IT systems you have, you've just got to have people managing the staff effectively and dealing with the issues when they arise. And that's my big focus and my big focus with, with my head of service and my service managers at the moment. So I kind of acknowledge the issue, but I would say we've got the tools and we're working on it and we're pushing really hard to improve that in terms of that kind of feedback you're getting.
Thank you.
Can I just come back in there? Thank you. You were talking about people's, you know, not being in. I have had reports of people that their work and they can't take time off. You know, it costs them to have time off work. So have you, have you got operatives that can work outside, you know, at the hours sort of thing? So if you work nine till five and the operatives come in at four, that you're not going to be in. So do we have operatives that work, you know, out of hours to get, to get to these people that work?
We don't have kind of like a formal out of hours service outside of our emergency response services. The service is generally a Monday to Friday service. What I would say though is what we have since the first of July, when we implemented the new structure in the service and the new terms and conditions and brought all those people who were on the old terms and conditions onto council terms and conditions, all of our staff are now have access to flexi-time and flexible working. And we are, we can extend the working day now to 6pm. So we have flexibility we didn't previously have where there are circumstances like those where we can try to make appointments later in the day for people. And in very exceptional circumstances, we do occasionally do work at the weekends on a scheduled basis as well. But that is basically using an emergency out of hours resource, which is incredibly expensive, as you can imagine. So I think we'll struggle to ever get to a position where we can offer a weekend service as a matter of course, just because of the cost. But we are much more flexible now than we used to be in terms of being able to accommodate later in the day and potentially earlier in the day within people's working hours because they can get flexible working from that.
Thank you. Councillor Thornton.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. I wanted to just re-emphasise a couple of things that councillor Fox has highlighted before I asked the question. I wanted to ask in that I do have a number of tenants that have said to me independently the same sorts of things as well, that operatives do sit in their vans and just then drive off after a certain amount of time. And I do have faith in a lot of the repairs and maintenance staff. Like I do think that a lot, there are many that work very hard and try to do as much as they can. I was speaking to one the other day that was doing emergency unplanned repairs and felt very, very overstretched, but was trying very hard to do his best. But that said, you know, I think you have spoken a little bit about the new sorts of monitoring that we can be doing with the pictures, for example, on how to do that. But, you know, hopefully we can, if that could be a point of, I don't know whether it'd be interest for the rest of the, for other members, but for next report, like a more, more of an item on monitoring and how we monitor that would be something that I would personally like to see. I don't know about you councillor Fox. Secondly, about how, and there have been obviously some green shoots of recovery in the repairs and maintenance service. Especially I recognise that there are challenges in dealing with a huge backlog after post-COVID. And that backlog obviously hit near 12,000 earlier in the year. So we are obviously a way down from where we were. Now, of my last questions at full council, obviously we couldn't address it and I thought probably the best to speak to you about it here anyway. That the repairs backlog has increased by another 500 due to, as councillor Johnson's response was saying, it was something about limited resources over summer. Now, I know going into winter, particularly with looking at the heights team, there'll be challenges with weather as to where the heights team can work and can't work, for example. That's just one example of many, I'm sure. In our ability to get to and to repair properties efficiently during the winter period, depending on how the weather's going to be. Now, if there's issues in summer and issues in winter that mean that that's going to spike the backlog, how are we going to get on top of this? Because it's still a huge problem. I was emailing you the other day about a case that is still, still ongoing. I'm sure it's probably been open and closed quite a few times when it was first reported to me back in, back in early 2020. Now, I just, I don't really see how, if there's challenges in summer with resource, challenges in winter with weather, how we're ever going to get on top of this. I suppose I'm seeking some reassurance from you as to how we go about that going forward. Because seeing the backlog increase by another 500 is alarming to me. Because I'm pleased that has come down from where it was, but seeing it go back up again is alarming to me. And I hope that that's a blip and not a trend.
Thank you. Tom?
So I think, so the summer holidays, but it's always a chance, a chance for any operational service, not just repairs and maintenance, a chance for anything, the refuse collection service, whatever, you know, because of holidays and because of bank holidays and everything else. That's always going to be a challenge for us because that's when everybody wants to be off. But we should be planning for that and we probably should be better at planning for that if I'm really, you know, be honest about it. That, that increase we've seen though, I think we are relatively confident that is associated with, with that reduction resource of a fairly limited actually summer holiday period of four to six weeks. And I think we're pretty confident that we will get back on top of that 500 and get things back on track. You're absolutely right, winter is a time of year where we know we get particular types of jobs increasing. So we know we'll get, you know, it's the working at height things, you said councillor Thornton. We know we will potentially get things like damp issues and stuff as well because we know, we've talked about the energy, the energy crisis as well. And, and the one thing I've been talking to my management team a lot about is being really clear about priorities and being really clear about what's important to us at certain periods of time. So we've had a really, really intensive focus on making sure that we're dealing with basic compliance issues over the last three or four months since I've been here. That is moving, I think you can see from the statistics, in a really positive direction. You know, into the winter as we move forward, my focus will be on exactly that and trying to focus on the stuff that we know will be problematic during the winter for people and keeping, you know, the foot down on the backlogs in that regard. So as much as I can ever give you an assurance on this stuff, you know, I would assure you that we're really focused on, you know, keeping the direction of travel as it is moving. There are some challenges, you know, what we'd love to do is basically, you know, pulling loads of additional resource, pulling subcontracts and other things. It's fairly evident to me, again, I've been here for three or four months, that we're not going to be able to rely on the subcontracts in the private market to get us out of this frankly, because the private market is in, is in, you know, is it, it's a really challenging market conditions for the private market in terms of construction and everything else. So we're going to have to do this ourselves. But, you know, I think all we can do is keep bringing this performance information to you. You can hold us to account for that and ask the right questions. And, you know, I'm as focused on trying to improve this as you are hopefully.
Right, thank you. I think, yeah, both those questions, very relevant, probably the most pressing issue. Can I just draw members' attention to the, the recommendation on this, which is the page 70? Just read out, it's the noting the performance report and then secondly highlighting issues of concern. And probably the most relevant page is on page 99, where you've actually got a table there, not the easiest to read, but you've got a table there of the performance indicators. And I just wonder, Janet and Tom, if we can ever think about how we can bring this to the committee one way or another on a regular basis. So I'm sure you can probably give a commitment to that so that we can track things over time. Don't want to spend too long on this because we've spent a lot of time before, but if we bring in councillor Belbin, then councillor Chaplin, and then maybe we can draw this item to a close if that's possible.
Thanks. It was on that page 99 actually that I wanted to. That RAG rating system that you're using there, one of the things that does look a bit concerning in there is that a lot of things that we're looking towards to make savings on do have those red RAG ratings on and that we're relying on them to make some of the bigger savings around disrepairs, around voids and so on. So I wondered if you could comment, I know you said there are the green shoots there, but I did wonder if you could comment on the fact that those trends don't seem to be going in the right direction at the moment. And the other question I had was just around, we talk about aiming towards 80% satisfaction with the service, but elsewhere in the report it talks about the house mark median being 88%. And I just wondered why, I appreciate we've got quite a way to go anyway, but why we're not aiming higher in the first place? Thank you.
So just, just on the voids, it probably is worth saying that part of the problem with these performance reports and committee reports in particular is that they're always a bit behind the current position. And if you take the voids, what we call work in progress, so the amount that are currently sitting with the repairs and maintenance service waiting to be turned around and made fit to let. In May, that was around about 600. In June, we got it down to about 550. It's currently around about 450. So the direction of travel in terms of the number of properties sitting with the repair service from a voids perspective is really positive actually. And some of these statistics don't quite reflect that unfortunately because of the timing of it. So I think as Douglas has said, one of the things that would be really good to think about is how we get you this information a bit more regularly because the direction of travel is, it's actually moving relatively quickly. Because when we've managed to get over some of the really old properties, it's made a significant difference in terms of performance or our ability to really move more quickly on some of the stuff that's causing us a problem. So I think from a voids perspective, it's relatively positive. But we, you know, still just really aware, it's not still where we would like it to be. In terms of satisfaction, absolutely right, you know, I, I think as you, as you said there councillor Belbin and somebody really, really, really well, really, I would love to aim for that house mark target. I am ambitious for this service, really ambitious for this service. I'm also realistic about where we are at the moment. And there's a long way for us to go in terms of getting satisfaction with this service. Because it's partly about what we actually do day to day, but it's also about, we know we are climbing a hill in terms of the perception of this service as well as the actuality of what we do. So we've kind of got to be better in a sense than we would otherwise be because of the reputation of service. So I'm really keen to look at those targets and we'll have a good look and make sure they come in line maybe with house mark stuff. But just acknowledging where we are, I think, is also important in terms of the service.
Thank you very much, yeah. Let's bring in councillor Chaplin for, for the last question on this. I'm conscious I want to move on because we've still got some meaty things we'll need to do in our closed session. But yeah, councillor Chaplin.
Thank, thank you, Chair. I will say though that having reports like this are, are very useful and they do deserve more than cursory examination. If I can, there's a couple of, well, three things I want to pull out. One, one is returning to something that councillor Fox mentioned about people working during the week and only being available at weekends. I know in particular in my ward it affects single people, particularly single men who, when they, they need a repair and they are out working during the week. And I would encourage you to look at having a facility where repairs, more ordinary repairs can be done at the weekend. I appreciate that it, it is that bit more expensive, but if it gets the job done and stops a repair becoming something much worse to deal with, you know, further down the line, it would be money well spent. I'm pleased that you're monitoring your own workforce. Having, having worked for another firm that likes to monitor its drivers, you, you do get to understand that while, while there are an awful lot of good, good people out there in the workforce really doing their best to, to get these repairs done, you've got one or two people that probably take a more relaxed approach to it. Hence the complaints about seeing the, the vehicles parked nearby and the jobs not getting done. But do we also, and I would hope that with, with the whole neighbourhood scheme that we moved to where we have more neighbourhood housing officers who are getting to know our tenants better, I would hope that we would have some useful information about those tenants who are, shall we say, unreliable about being in, you know, holding, holding them there so that their repairs can be done on, on the day they said they would be in. And I do understand, and I dare, I mean, I know Janet Sharp will know this as well. A number of our tenants do lead very chaotic lives and suddenly decide to go out because they, something's happened somewhere else and therefore they're not around. But having that information available and perhaps sharing that with housing repairs would probably make your job easier, Tom. And the other thing, as, as we've had happen today with, with our own councillor, Ben Curran, family emergencies, had to go to hospital with a family member. You know, life happens unfortunately.
It does indeed, yeah, thank you for that. I think smart's been covered, but Tom, brief response or Janet?
I think in, in terms of the relationship between the housing repairs has always been very strong. And certainly, you know, we, we do more in that. One of the things that we do have is a lot of information about, about our tenants, you know, people who, who also have quite a lot of support from other services as well in the council. And there is obviously, you know, a lot of work we do, so we absolutely understand that, that customer. And that's really important here. So that, you know, the relationship between the housing patch officer and the tenants is very strong. So, so we know people who may always struggle to have someone in the property, you know, or there may be other things happening with that. So one of the things that we, we want to do is, is we all. So one of the things that we we want to do is is we already, you know, between repairs and houses, we'll triage, we can't get in, can you get in, do you know what's happening with with this this tenant site? And make that, you know, real really important, you know, and and maintain those really strong links. But also, I think it is also about, you know, with the new housing systems coming on stream, Tom's obviously done a lot of work on Total Mobile, you know, that will also provide it so that whoever is in those properties, they will be able to probably be able to understand if other services are struggling to access that property. And so that will be incredibly important. So I don't think that that we don't talk to one another, because there is a lot of case conferencing and triaging information. And sometimes, you know, if the repairs can't get in to do a gas servicing, then the patch office can try and navigate a way through to be able to reassure that tenant that it's okay to let the engineers in. So it's it's very much not, you know, and also making sure that, you know, that tenant understands why we need to get into that that property, you know, and and there is that opportunity as well of where they may need additional support. What we're trying to do is, it's not those people who who can't let us in, it's those people who choose not to. And I think that's our priority.
Thank you very much, Janet, yeah. Can I just take people to the recommendation? I think we do need to move on, if I just build a look at page, do you want to, yeah, do make it quick if you can, thanks.
It's just something that I've just literally just noticed, on the table on page 99 with the, on the section on customer services, the longest call waiting time to report a repair, minutes, all the data is down, is not applicable. I was wondering if that's just a mistake or error, or if you can explain that?
We we do have that data available, actually, councillor Thornton, so I think that probably is a mistake and we can provide that outside the meeting.
I think I got some from councillor Johnson yesterday, so I was a bit confused, that's why it would be not applicable.
And I'll be honest with you, it's a bit of a shame, really, because actually that's going, that's that is improving. And the other thing I was I was going to say very briefly, if I had the opportunity, so here we go, is that we are, we have now got a web form for the repairs and maintenance service. Whilst we haven't done a lot of publicity on that, because I'm here in a public meeting, publicising it, we haven't done a lot of publicity on that so far, because we still want to make sure it's working really well. In the in the first week of that being live, 10% of the jobs that we've taken as a service have come via the online system and we haven't publicised it. So there's current demand there and that will have a really positive impact, I think, on the contact centre going forward.
Now, Tom, you can't be bringing good news to this committee, that's not on, but yeah, very good news. Actually, I just, it's a good point, councillor Thornton, to pick it up, if there is a revised table, would you be able to check that and then circulate it to the committee, I think would be useful for us? Probably our pre-agenda meetings, wanting to think about when we can schedule in more performance reports. Can I take people to the recommendations now? I think really the only recommendation is is point one on page 70, which is to note the performance report update there for that quarter that's been provided. Can I just have a show of hands to approve that? Thank you, everyone. Right, so that's unanimous. Let's move on to the next items here. We've, so the next one is the Housing Ombudsman Code of Practice. Now, I'm kind of hoping that this this is something that requires our approval, but will hopefully be a bit formalities, so we don't string it out too long. Obviously, not stopping anyone asking questions, but it'd be good if we can move that on and then get on to the the difficult stuff. So it's item 12. Who's Bev? Would you like to introduce it, say what it is and what we're being asked to decide on today? Thank you.
Thank you. There's a brief report and there's a meaty document that sits behind it, which is the self-assessment. So if we just say that what the Housing Ombudsman expects social housing landlords to do, and again, as Janet said, this includes the repairs and maintenance service, is assess how we manage complaints against their code of complaints handling. So what this is, is the assessment is how we assess ourselves against that. So as I said, we've worked with our colleagues in repairs and maintenance and we've also worked with customer services staff to the self-assessment. So as you can see, there's quite a few elements in the code of conduct, some, the 70 elements, some of which are must-dos and some are classed as best practice. And you'll see that what we've said in there is that we measure up quite well against those elements, but we have got some where we've got two best practices that we don't adhere to, we're not compliant at this moment in time. And we've got some that we're partially compliant against and then the best practice and a couple for the mandatory. So as I said, the assessment's there for you to see and we put some comments at the side. And what I'd also like to draw your attention to is when we do the assessment, that what we do is we then produce an action plan. So what we will do is look where we're not compliant or partially compliant and then we will put some actions in place. So then when we do this assessment, which is an annual requirement from the Housing Ombudsman, then we will have moved towards some of the non-compliance and partial. So for you, as I say, it's the assessment that's there. So we've said how we comply with the code of complaints handling, where we've identified some of the gaps. We do have an action plan in place that is a working document and that is monitored by staff, again, from housing, customer services and repairs and maintenance, to make sure that we're making the progress that we need to. And what I'm asking the committee to do, because it is a requirement of the Housing Ombudsman, is to note the outcome of the self-assessment. And then what we are asked to do again by the Housing Ombudsman is publish this on the website. We will also be taking the self-assessment to the housing and neighbourhood advisory panel so that they they have sight of this as well. So as I said, they're the, hopefully, a brief report and the recommendations.
Thank you, that's nice and concise, Bev. And you've jumped straight to the saying what the recommendations are what being asked you. They're written out on page 102, if anyone wants to check those. Not seeing any hands, so I'm just wondering if we, we've got it here, it's really about giving approval to publish this, so it'll be out there on the website, fully transparent. And there's the ongoing working plan on that, isn't there? So if there's no questions, shall I just ask everyone to give approval to that? So recommendations on page 102. Quick show of hands to approve that? Thanks very much, that's unanimous. Good. Thanks very much for that. Now, we're moving on to the more difficult stuff. So I think the order of things we've got here is if we move on to item 13 next, and I'm assuming that Ryan will take us through the overall financial picture on the revenue budget. And then we'll move into items eight and nine on the business plans, which are the public bit. And then we'll have to go into closed session to discuss items 14 and 15, which are those in a bit more detail. So if that's the way forward, I'm handing over to Ryan.
Thank you, Chair. I think I can probably keep this fairly fairly succinct as well. So the report in front of you shows the the overall council general fund revenue position, which is £21.7 million overspent, slight change on the previous month, which essentially relates to the inclusion of the estimated pay award for the council for this year. For the housing committee, the position is relatively similar to previous reports and the reasons for variance are also similar. Housing general fund is broadly balanced and the housing revenue account is forecasting a contribution to capital investment that's around 13.4 million lower than the budget. The performance report and actually the discussion that the committee's just had set out the reasons for the for the financial variance and and, you know, you've had a good discussion with with officers on the on the progress that has been made. The reasons for the financial variance are the same, they're around the turnaround of vacant properties and the costs that are being incurred as the housing repairs and maintenance service catches up on the backlogs. And that that combination of two issues essentially results in lower than expected rental income, higher temporary accommodation costs, council tax costs, disrepair claims and other issues. But the fundamental reasons that the service are addressing, which are described very well in the performance report, if 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 the performance report were all green, that the finances would would be as well, I'm confident in that. So obviously happy to take any questions, but I think frankly the substantial discussion around this item has, to a certain extent, already happened.
Thank you, Ryan, that's that's very helpful. So again, any questions on that? I mean, it's interesting that what Ryan's just said really reflects some of the things that we've been thrashing out in the fortnightly knowledge briefings and also in some of the the pre-agenda meetings here. Just just to remind to all the members of the committee, the knowledge briefings are open to all members of the committee, it's not just the spokespeople. And, you know, you do come if you find those useful so that we can get through some of those. Councillor Thornton, question?
Sorry, there's a lot of them today. Just a point on the knowledge briefing, they currently are on a day which I cannot attend and will never be able to attend. If there is any way that they could be changed to any any one of Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday, then I'll have to leave it with you. But I'm not going to kick up a huge fuss, you know, I can talk to Penny and chat off things myself, but if if that is possible, that's all, that's a discussion for future or consideration, that's all right. Thank you. Just as you put it up, it was then in my brain, but.
No, no, thank you, it's it's a good point, it's always difficult to get meetings to accommodate everyone. But yeah, and we'd also have to have discussions in our groups too, so. Any questions on the finance report that's in front of us here? Or maybe, if not, then we might as well move on to the actual business plan work. Any questions? Shall we just move to the recommendation on that? It's a very simple one, just to note the information we've given, it's on page 121, in fact, to note to note the council's challenging financial position as of the end of July. Might be an understatement, but it's done as a recommendation. Everyone happy to approve that? Quick show of hands? Yeah, everyone's happy with that? Yep, unanimous, yeah, thank you very much. So moving on to, I'll just give a bit of advice on how you want to deal with it here, eight and nine, so who's leading on that? So, I mean, here's the housing of new business count. Over to you then for, so do the stuff on item eight. Yeah?
Thank you, councillor Johnson. I've also got here in the room Peter Brown from the housing service and Alan Damon from finance, who do a huge amount of work on a daily basis to help support the service with the council's ring-fenced housing revenue account. So hopefully the report is fairly self-explanatory. It sets it sets out the review that has take place in the account for the council's housing revenue account, which is a ring a ring-fenced account in order to collect income and also to provide the services that our tenants need along with repairs and also future capital investment programmes to make sure that we continue to be improving our homes. You will see in the report that as part of that review, there is also been a number of significant national considerations as that's that's taking place. Lots of obviously work taking place around cost of living, not only making sure that we bring in income through through rents, but also we also reflect of the support our tenants need to be able to be able to afford their homes and also make sure that they they are great places to live. There's also, you will see consultation underway on the government's social housing rent standard. There are there are lots of people detailed in the report that we explain who are tenants who are struggling to be able to to afford not only their rents but council tax and lots of other things. And we now have seen a significant increase in the number of tenants that are on full benefits, whether that is universal credit or or other benefits. And that's now at about 74% of all tenancies, which is very high for us. And then obviously there is the social housing regulation bill, you know, that's a new way of regulations for housing and that is to improve the quality, the standards of social housing and also to make sure that our compliant, we are compliant with that regulatory light standard. And also the fire and building safety regulations are now coming into the force. That is around really stepping up and improving our fire and and building safety regulations and also making sure that our, particularly our flats and masons are safe and feel safe for residents. And then obviously the report deals as part of the review with our ongoing priorities. So so we we, in terms of, Tom has spoken about, you know, the work that is taking place to improve the repair service, but we've also got quite a significant housing investment programme, our capital programme, you know, that's, you know, well over sort of 600 million over five, over the next five years. And that is to really improve the quality of our homes. It's to deal with those elemental replacements that we need to carry out in our homes. And also, you know, some of our street scene improvements that we need to do in many of our neighbourhoods, so that that homes and also our neighbourhoods are very attractive. Sustaining tenancies is a significant priority for the service and that people want to stay and live in their homes rather than continually be moving and supporting our tenants. Alongside, obviously, talks about, you know, accelerating decarbonisation and our commitment to reaching EPCC by 2030 and our new approach to neighbourhood management that 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 many councils have referenced today, which has been very nice, you know, in terms of really prioritising on the things that make the greatest difference. And certainly with the new service post-October, I think you will see the improvements that we plan to make. And also making sure homes are safe, we are preventing homelessness, we are being more open and transparent in terms of the service and engaging with our tenants and much more inclusive. And certainly, like, we have, you know, a strong tenant scrutiny role, you know, with with our tenant board, you know, really scrutinising our performance and really challenging about how we're delivering our services and modernising our ways. So you will see the report, it details obviously our investment in a whole new IT system for for housing and obviously that will also benefit the repair service. Our IT system hasn't been replaced since 2000 and it doesn't work, it doesn't work for customers and it doesn't work for offices as well. So modernising that will bring efficiencies to the to the service. So so I think, hopefully, the report also talks about its financial challenge. And and in the report is is very detailed in terms of that presently, you know, we have got a significant pressure on the housing revenue account. And that is, you know, due to many things, you know, it is due to inflation, it is due to inflation, it is due to, you know, some of the cost of living challenges, it's due to the cost of material increases and also utility and energy costs that is significantly affecting the business plan. What we are required to do is have a business plan that balances over the 30-year period as well as obviously making sure it balances in years as well. So 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 we've got, we've we have been working through a number of options, but as you will see in the report, we are assuming a rent increase in 2023, 24, as as at at round about 5% for modelling purposes. Then that means that we are going to identify round about £21 million worth of savings in 20 in 23, 24, to be able to bring the business plan back to a balanced position. That will be significant. Rent setting through the rents and currently, if that doesn't change, allows us to set rents, what we call CPR plus 1%. Presently, inflation is running at over 10%. So if that continues, then then rents would be significantly more than 5%. Rents this year are at 4.1%. But as we know, inflation is much higher and also our pay award has needed to be factored in as well, that's that's creating some significant pressures, not only for housing services but for repair services and any other services that are funded from the housing revenue account who provide services that support our tenants. So so we so we do have some challenges, but I think we also shouldn't overlook the excellent work that takes place, you know, by by the services, by improvements, continuing to prove our homes, continuing to build new homes through our stock increase programme, and also the really good work that takes place on a day-to-day basis. However, there are challenges and we obviously now need to do much more detailed work about how we can realise savings in the housing revenue account in order to reach a balanced position. We will be providing a response to government on the consultation. We will be providing a response to government on the consultation on the rent standard. That consultation ends on the twelfth of October, so we hope that that will inform the government's guidance to local authorities on rent setting. But just to reassure committee, what we are doing now is we have been looking at a range of rent increase options so that when we receive any further guidance from government on each rent standard, then we can put plans in place to be able to ensure the business plan reaches a balanced position. None of those choices are easy. All of those choices are going to have implications for services and staff. But one of the things we want to do is make sure we've got a clear plan for balancing the housing revenue account that takes into account the forecast overspend this year and also the financial pressures for twenty three, twenty four. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Yeah, in view of the time, that was the four o'clock bell. It it looks like the next item is where you'll come around and actually talk about the the general fund proposals there. So for committee members, the point about this paper is it, what we're being asked to do is just note the update, and it's largely written there. It's not the HRA business plan, it's an update on where we're going with that. And he recommends, it's on page forty, the recommendation, recommends that a further HRA business plan report is presented at November's committee. So it's a very useful but holding report. So I want to suggest that we perhaps approve those recommendations, move straight on to a short presentation by Janet on the next item on the general fund savings. And then, but I should hold questions on that until we get to the the closed items fourteen and fifteen. So is the general, if people are happy with that, can I just propose we do that? If so, can we just look at the recommendations? Can I ask for approval to note that update and recommend a further update is brought to the November meeting? So general support for that? Yeah, thank you. So I think that's unanimous there, isn't it? Janet, shall we go straight on to your item on, so starting on page fifty five, item nine on the general fund savings? Again, you've written it out there, got a short presentation on that.
Yeah, yes, certainly. Thank you. Thank councillor Johnson. So the the housing service receives a mixture of both. It's funded from the housing revenue account, the council's housing revenue account, and also general fund, which obviously Ryan discussed as part of his finance report. And similarly, the the housing general fund that supports critical services in housing. So it it supports our homeless services, it funds our homeless services, private sector housing, enforcement and support services. We support non-council tenants, our gypsy and travellers residential sites, our strategic housing functions, and also in previous years, we have benefited from some of the council's capital investment fund that's helped support our growth teams who do a lot of regeneration type activity. The general fund is also faced with, you know, unprecedented challenges as well in terms of increasing inflation, energy bills and obviously, you know, future pay award that we've needed to take into account. The report shows that we need to identify savings of round about seven hundred and twenty three thousand for twenty three, twenty four. Some of these services have year on year have needed to reduce due to the pressures on the housing general fund. However, and the 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 overall total housing general fund budget is only at four point four million for those services. But we are going to be looking at saving options with yourself and and bring them forward for the committee in November to the tune of seven hundred and twenty three thousand. And if those proposals are agreed in November, when we bring those forward, then that will mean we will be reducing the housing general fund budget by about sixteen percent. And and again, you know, some of those proposals, because most of those those services are are, you know, in terms of staff within those teams, they are very much frontline operational services. But what we will do is our best to bring forward proposals that mitigates the risk as best possible to be able to make sure we can deliver on those statutory services. Again, the recommendations in the report is, this report is for noting. And and certainly we will be, you know, working through obviously those processes with this committee and also bring back firm proposals for decision in November.
Thanks very much, Janet. As I said, you've gone over the recommendations there. They're on page fifty six. So again, to note the financial pressures, not described as challenging this time, but they certainly are. Note the general fund financial pressures and then recommend the report to be brought to the November meeting. Can I just ask people to give some approval to that and then we'll move on to the closing? So is that approved? Yeah, show of hands? Thank you. I think that's unanimous again. In that case, thank you very much for that, Janet. It set the scene for the difficult stuff. Now, I think that means we're at the point where we now ask all the public to leave, which means turning off the camera, I'm sure. Nothing else, is there? So, so yeah, we're, so, yeah. So I think formally we need to resolve to exclude the press and public, don't we? So can I just have a show of hands for excluding the press and public? Right, thank you very much. Let's treat that as carried. Is the camera off?